Let's move to another one, the feasibility study. And so, Mr. Washington, you want to talk about that? And then we'll see whether we have questions on that.
Sure, not a, not a problem, sir. I'll just do a brief introduction to that and turn it over to whatever question may have. Um, last Thursday, we presented our twenty twenty twenty-one feasibility study, which is our annual review of long-term capital planning and attendance area of adjustments. Um, I think I want to note a couple of things real quick. That together with our comprehensive maintenance plan, the feasibility study is the other tool that we use to kind of inform our capital improvement program. As I stated a number of times, and I know each member of this council and of the board has stated it over and over again, we are a growing county, and as a growing county, we're continuing to have increasing needs. Uh, this feasibility study in the process has started to address some of those additional needs that we're starting to see, particularly in regards to regional programs that we're going to have to start taking accountable because we got the county continuing to grow, we're seeing the need more and more for those type of programs. So you're going to see some things in the feasibility study where I, I will call them recommendations or just potential strategies. These do not supersede projects in our capital budget, I want to make that clear. But they do present needs in particular areas that we're starting to see and trends that we're seeing now that may be a little bit different than what we saw pre-COVID. And that is the crux of our study. So you're going to see some differences if you haven't already between a previous projects, maybe in the previous CIP and what's in the CIP now, not in terms of the project, but in terms of looking at some needs we're starting to see in the future, regional programs and also additional needs we're starting to see in the county. And with the fact that we're going to have to think about how to address these needs in the not-too-distant future. Uh, Mr. Lubley, Mr. Rogers and myself are here to answer questions in regards to that, and we can go in and definitely go into more detail.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Do we have any questions from council members and school board members and Mr. Youngman? Okay, you. Uh, Ms. Young. You're muted.
Um, so I wanted to go back to my, uh, question that I was asking when we were talking about student yield, um, that was more appropriate for this. And that is the local capacity and state-rated capacities for the school year chart, which is on page fifteen of the feasibility study. And, um, I guess what my question is that in looking at, e- examining this chart pretty closely, there are huge swings in what the state and the county believe is the appropriate capacity for the school. And I, you know, I see what the calculations are, but I'm wondering, I'm looking at one, two, three, four, five, um, maybe about twelve schools, including the middle schools and the high schools, that have swings of over a hundred students. And, um, I'm wondering if somebody from the school district could better explain why those swings are so large. And some of them, the school district says that we can have a hundred more students. And then some of them, the, the state says you, you have to have a hundred fewer students. So that's also swinging back and forth between us saying we can have more students, as in the Howard County School District saying we can have more students, and, and the Howard County School District saying, oh, no, we have capacity for a hundred fewer. And I'm, I, I'm just wondering if there's anything that you, anything else you could say that would illuminate the differences, um, on that chart.
Sure, and Mr. Lubley, kind of jumping here on this one. I know that for the last number of years, we've talked about this quite a bit in terms of, at least at the baseline level, how our local capacity calculation and the state capacity calculation differs based off of size of area programs that accounted, uh, just to give a starter for that, and how that in itself starts that divide that sometimes gets, um, exponentially larger or smaller depending on things like that. Kind of going to that piece that she was talking about, particularly with those programs and how they're counted differently at the local level than at the state level.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Washington and, uh, Councilmember Young. As you noted, it, the primary difference between the local-rated capacity and the state-rated capacity is how they're calculated. You could see on page thirteen, it identifies at each level how the school system calculates the capacity of the individual schools. And then, as you noted, on page fifteen, it identifies how the state goes through and they calculate. You could see that there are some differences that are added into there with regards to the number of times or the number of students times the space. And there's differences of how the state takes into account, uh, certain programs versus how the school system takes into account certain programs. The other thing that I'll point out, as Mr. Washington noted, is the size of the space that's counted. Here, uh, with the school system, a teaching space is deemed to be a teaching space if it is six hundred and sixty square feet minimum. The state actually goes down below that, around five hundred square feet. So there are spaces that the state will count that the school system, uh, doesn't count as an actual teaching space. And then, as you get into the individual regional programs and the spaces and how they're actually used by the schools, that starts to affect how, um, we utilize and we count our capacity as well. Is there anything you'd like to add on to that, Mr. Rogers?
Uh, Mr. Lubley, I think you covered everything.
Can I ask a follow-up about relocatables then? Because that also has to deal with capacity. And it says that relocatable classrooms are excluded from the calculation. Um, so that means, and I, I'm looking as an example, um, Reservoir High School, which next year is projected to be one hundred and twenty-four percent overcapacity. And apparently, there are a number of relocatables now at Reservoir High School. And I assume then that the relocatables that are now housing the students that are overcapacity at Reservoir right now will not be calculated in that overcapacity number. So Reservoir will be one hundred and twenty-four percent overcapacity in the coming school year without the relocatables.
That is correct. Uh, the relocatables are not counted towards the building's capacity. The brick-and-mortar facility itself is what indicates the actual capacity. Then the total student enrollment provides that utilization. Um, the portables are always meant to be, and we, we do truly hope that they are temporary situations. We all know due to multiple, um, factors that they tend to be there longer than we would like. But you are correct that portables are not counted in the actual capacity for each school.
Okay, and then, Mr. Lubley, do we have a separate chart somewhere that indicates, um, how long portables have been at a certain school? And I, I'm thinking about my daughter's, um, middle school, Harper's Choice. I, there were, there were portables at Harper's Choice when she attended there twelve years ago. Um, I'm assuming they're still there. Um, and what does that mean for the school district, the schools? What does it take, I guess, to get an addition? Like, if you are, uh, if you're at relocatables for fifteen years, doesn't that say we need an addition to the school? Is there a formula for that?
There is not a formula specifically to the quantity of relocatables that factor into an addition. Uh, the, the mere factor that the, the portables are there are based off of the enrollment and the capacity utilization that is taken into account. But specifically, the quantity or the length of portables that are there are, there's not an actual formula for that. As noted, there are multiple factors that go into an actual project. The, the need, the demonstrated need, the age of the facility all go into that. So i- in a manner of speaking, yes, the age of the facility and the portables are considered, but it's not a, a direct, um, equation.
So then I would just say to, I guess, the members of the school board, maybe that's something to think about. And we would need, we should have a formula that if a, that if a specific school has had relocatables, X number of relocatables over X number of years, that we should then contemplate putting a, in addition onto the school.
Understand, ma'am. I will also like to just note that there are, uh, portables that are are at facilities that are not necessarily utilized for the school. So that was, that would be something that we would also have to take into account. Um, as an example, with some of the new laws that have come out, it's not as easy to pick up a portable, move it and relocate it, or even bring one back. The, in most cases, the portable cannot go back in the same location. So if we are projecting maybe a, a slight decrease in enrollment, but then potentially going back up, there are times that we will look to leave a relocatable at an existing school for a, a certain time.
And, Mr. Lubley, just a quick, uh, follow-up to the initial question from Ms. Young. Didn't we also touch base with the state and potentially trying to go over a revision of those calculations uh, with the state-rated capacity? I think we requested that, didn't we, in recent years?
Uh, yes, sir. It's been a constant communication with the state. They have recently gone through and taken a look at some of the elementary schools based off of previous conversations with our Board of Education. We have our inter-agency specialists in our offices, construction, um, currently speaking with the state to look at, uh, specific schools to have them recalculated.
Okay, Ms. Marla, you have something you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just want to, um, kind of give, uh, Councilwoman Young some additional context. And that is that while a school may be, may not have the continued need, it's a huge cost to decommission a, uh, portable. And so there are times when the utilization of the portable is a better choice for what we have on-site than removing it and/or relocating it, because most of the time the relocation isn't actually, a lot of them cannot be relocated easily. So there are times when a portable will exist longer than its capacity utilization student enrollment need.
Okay, and Ms. Walsh.
Have enough money for, to build additions on every school that we need to put an addition on.
Ms. Walsh.
Thank you, Dr. Wu. Um, I'm on page thirty-five of, of the feasibility study, and that's, uh, the middle school needs and strategies section. Uh, I, I am confused about statements that I see that say things like we are, um, adequately or, or in a really good way projecting student yields from new construction and are hitting ninety-five or ninety-nine percent, um, accuracy. With, with statements like a Thomas Viaduct is going to be a hundred and thirty percent overutilized in a number of years. And that's largely due to new developments like Oxford Square, Blue Stream and Howard Square. Well, I, I mean, I keep coming back to middle schools today because after reading this report, um, that's, that's the segment of our school facilities that I'm, I feel like I need to be freaking out about more. Um, but what, how do we, how do we account for a bust like that? Um, where we think we're going to be, you know, we're going to need two hundred and fifty more seats at the newest middle school? Like, where, how do we go wrong? What, what is happening?
Mr. Rogers would like to speak to those projections.
Sure, um, thank you for that question, Ms. Walsh. We, at the middle school level, um, Thomas Viaduct, you know, has been open for a few years. And if you, if we look back, um, to the projections when that school opened, um, you'll, I think you'll find that actually, I think you'll find that actually we expected the school to be utilized at similar to this level, um, going back a few years. And in recent CIPs, there has been an addition identified at Oakland Mills Middle School as the eventual solution to relieve that crowding at Thomas Viaduct Middle School. Um, what we're suggesting in this feasibility study, however, is, um, to, instead of adding seats to Oakland Mills, the possibility of directly addressing the crowding at Thomas Viaduct with an addition there. Um, I know that's different than the previous strategy, and it's likely to, uh, raise some questions. However, uh, we wanted to suggest a, a direct approach to relieving the most overcrowded middle school in the county, um, as opposed to, uh, at, uh, adding on seats at an adjacent school or a nearby school and, um, adjusting boundaries to use those seats.
Mr. Rogers, if, I just want to confirm, um, what you just said is that as, as we originally were conceiving, uh, Thomas Viaduct, that it was projected for a utilization as we're seeing now, correct?
Uh, I wouldn't use the word original, but early projections for Thomas Viaduct in the, in the, the years following its opening did show the, um, capacity utilization that we're expecting now in, for school year twenty-one, twenty-two and beyond.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Ms. Quatronio?
I think we're, you know, we, we spent the last ten years building a lot of elementary school capacity. And so where do they go? Middle school. And we are now, um, you know, middle, middle school number twenty-one first appeared on a feasibility study, um, in twenty fifteen. And it was, um, you know, and then it disappeared two years later that, you know, because of funding realities, um, you know, it was no longer appeared and it became additions. And right now, we probably have about almost seven hundred seats worth of middle school seats that we need. And now we've split it up into additions. Um, I know it was shocking for me to see Thomas Viaduct as the addition site because many of you know that it is a very restricted site. It was supposed to be one school site, and then it became two. And I was even concerned when we added relocatables to that site as far as enough room. And now, uh, a proposed addition, um, is, is, you know, proposed to go there through the feasibility study. Um, another impact of that is that suddenly Oakland Mills Middle School renovation has been deferred once again out to the Netherlands of twenty thirty-two and beyond. And that's a direct result of the addition at Thomas Viaduct. And so that's, that kind of sums up what's been happening in our school system is that our older schools keep getting deferred because we need, suddenly we need, not suddenly, but it becomes an emergency to get capacity. And, um, certainly, a hu- a school with a hundred and thirty percent capacity utilization is an emergency, um, as we saw with Oak, Oakland Mills Middle and, and needing to redistrict. So our current emergency is at the middle school level. There's simply nowhere to go. Um, but that being said, I don't think anyone on this board supports deferring Oakland Mills Middle any further and the, the choices to put the addition there. Um, and then when we redistrict, um, you know, sort of alleviate that. But certainly, you know, if you just look at the feasibility studies from through the years and what the plans were, uh, you can, it tells the story. And it's always about pushing out the deferral, deferred projects even further to create the capacity because we have, uh, we have not, um, planned infrastructure appropriately for the new and, and certainly in certain areas of, it's, it's even more of a problem, especially in the northeast and southeast parts, southeast is the next emergency. Um, so that, that's really the story of middle school. Um, and to put an addition onto Thomas Viaduct, our newest middle school built in two thousand fourteen, it certainly should, tells the story of why we are where we are on this and the unfortunate situation that we've had to push out our older schools' much, much, much-needed renovation projects. HVAC, not only additions, but the renovations to, which speak directly to the health and safety of our students.
Okay, Ms. Thomas Moore.
So I just want to bring another little data point into this, and, um, Mr. Lubley can correct me if I'm wrong, is that when we have students at school X and we have either a pre-K or a regional program, the number of students enrolled at that school does not include those students, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So think of, so when we look at that enrollment number, depending on the school, it's not a true number. So you add, because you really have to look at the number of bodies that are in the school because the bodies take the seats. And the capacity, when we look at the capacity numbers that are in the feasibility study, the capacity numbers do not change based on whether or not a pre-K program or a, um, regional program is in that school, correct?
Uh, partially. The capacity numbers are updated when programs are removed or added to a school. However, classrooms dedicated to regional programs are not included in the capa- in the capacity portion of the utilization calculation just as students in those programs are not included in the enrollment portion of the capacity utilization calculation.
Well, I think it would be helpful if we could find a way to report that data along with each school as well. Because in the past, we have, as a system, utilized the movement of, um, especially regional programs in and out of schools, and that's impacting the spaces and the seats that we have in the schools, correct?
Uh, well, there are, are movements in these programs, uh, each year.
Right, so.
Programs grow and needs change around the county, yes.
Right, and since we have a county where we don't have enough capacity, we're kind of moving stuff. And we're never really, what I'm saying is I don't think it gives us the, as true of a picture of what our capacity versus what our enrollment looks like. And I completely appreciate, um, Councilwoman Young's point of looking at the number of relocatables we have. And heck, if we've had them there, clearly we need an addition because we need to put the students somewhere. The challenge I think we have is based on both what the print is of the school. Hopefully, you could put the addition where the, where the payables are. But then we also need the funding in order to build the addition. So again, as always, we come back to that issue of, is there enough funding in order to increase the brick-and-mortar capacity of the schools or to build new schools?
Okay, Ms. Ms. Mousley?
Hello. I wanted to add a little bit of the, of information to this conversation when we're talking about capital improvements, specifically when we are chasing, um, capacity changes and, um, chasing, um, putting new capital improvements on schools where only capacity needs. For example, at the middle school level, which is what we're talking about in this report, Lake Elkhorn Middle School and Oakland Mills Middle School both have capacity right now and could handle some of the Thomas Viaduct. And some of the Thomas Viaduct students feed into Oakland Mills High School, which is a feed that exists for those middle schools as well. So there's that. But I also wanted to talk about what the impacts is. When, it's not just a seat for a child at a school. When we talk about deferring maintenance and deferring these capital projects for the individual schools, it's the actual experience, the actual materials, the actual everything that the students experience at school. And sometimes we see, especially at this example, when we're wanting to postpone Oakland Mills Middle School, that, that school has been postponed, it has tons of deferred maintenance on it, and it doesn't have the funding available to its administration to update anything that they want to update. Some other schools have other avenues of funding that don't exist in some schools, right? And by repeatedly deferring, deferring in certain areas because they don't have the capacity, but then we're not utilizing the capacity they have from neighboring schools, it's really, really harmful to the students in these schools. And it's not just the health of the building, it's also the health of their experience of their education, right? And because it's more difficult to be an educator and be an administrator in these schools because you don't have the funding support and you have older equipment and you have to deal with, you know, technology, for example, that is not easily updated, you have higher turnover rates for these schools. Um, this is one example as to why, you know? And it is a negative impact. So I would really like to work together to get the funding and the prioritization to update and renovate our older schools and not only update and renovate schools that are newer construction that are getting more capacity because they're newer construction. Because if you think about our taxpayers, they're going to pay a tax amount for their school, right? Where they're going to buy their house, right? Not even knowing anything about the school. If you drive up to, say, Thomas Viaduct and you see the school, it's a brand-new school, looks beautiful. If you drive up to Oakland Mills and you look at the school and you're like, eh, it's kind of nineteen seventies. I don't know, I can afford this, uh, similar house in both areas. I'm going to buy in Thomas Viaduct area, right? So then it's like this sick, this cycle that just keeps compounding itself. And if we don't invest in our older schools, it's never going to stop. And we're going to keep having the same conversation over and over again where it's not just redistricting, it's not just capital improvements, it's investing in our communities and what we need from those communities. And I'd really like to see a, a little switch in the prioritization and how we work together to make those things happen because these are communities where there is no new development. So it's never going to come up on the list and of the prioritization. So that's something I can think we can do together.
Mr. Walsh, and you want to respond?
Yes, I, I, I did. I wanted to give a little bit of a historic perspective because I know I heard this on Thursday night and also, uh, again, today, and I understand the concern. Um, and this goes back to something that was stated by another member in terms of capacity versus systemic. Um, if you go back and look at our CIP, and I'm, I'm talking about going back at least a good ten years or so, we were on pace to do exactly what many of you are talking about. We were going through schools basically based off of year and renovating them. If you look at when we back, I'll, I'll say back in two thousand, uh, two thousand nine, we went back and we were doing Hammond Elementary School. When we did two thousand twelve, we did Thunder Hill, we did Phelpsluck, we did, uh, Longfellow, and we did Twansfield. We were going through them where the schools that were built in seventy, the schools that were built in seventy-two, schools that were built in seventy-three, and we were going through that cycle of renovating all of them. When the funding really became, began to become a challenge around the mid-portion of the two thousand teens, around two thousand fourteen and fifteen, and our capacity continued to grow, that's when we had to make that really that harder effort to address more capacity than systemic based off of the limited funding. But we've gone through those cycles because I look back, and again, I know this has come up at meetings before, I look back at a CIP from two thousand fourteen to fifteen, you will see how that next round of schools based off of the year they were constructed with the next set of schools that were based to be done. And it was systematically, we were systematically going through schools like that, in some cases putting on additions, but in many cases doing systemic renovation. So I guess I say that to say the fact that we haven't ignored systemic renovation, and it's a very big priority. When we've come to schools that we cannot do an entire renovation for based off of, um, QZAB money or other resources, we try to go in there and deal with certain infrastructure-type things to keep the schools in good repair. Um, I just want to make sure that is in the narrative, that, one, number one, there was a system in place that was renovating the schools periodically. The schools were being renovated based off of systemic condition and age of facility. But again, as funding became, began to begin a challenge, you had to begin to look at, we had to have seats. And because you had to have seats, you had to begin to prioritize the seats and then try to make sure with the, with the systemic side that you did basically try to prioritize and do the, the, the major projects or the higher priority projects in that order. So I just wanted to basically put that out there into the narrative, but I do understand everybody's concern. The other piece I want to, once again, say again, and this came up even Thursday, is just, this is just showing the need. Mr. Rogers actually stated this. We're not saying that, we're, we, we, when looking at Oakland Mills Middle School, basically, it was a, it was a renovation and an addition. What Mr. Rogers plainly said was we were looking at the direct need of this, of the ren- of the addition being put at the problem area or the concerning area, which is why Thomas Viaduct came up. It was never, it was never a thing of trying to push back the other school. And again, the CIP is already moving forward as it was approved. These projects that are shown here show need. They do not supersede the CIP that was just approved last month. Those projects are in that order, those projects are proceeding in that order. But this is still showing you that needs are shifting, needs are changing, and how we may have to look at some things in the future, but it does not supersede that need.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. And, uh, I, I think we run out of time. We'll drop the long-term school deferred maintenance to the next board meeting with the county council. I think it's, like, worth it more time to discuss how we can really collaborate. It's really the, one part is really the money issue, right? If we don't have money to do that, we just couldn't do that. And, uh, then we're just have a budget updated for the last ten minutes. We're, we're trying to, uh, wrap up, we have a lot of people in the line. So be pretty straightforward with your question. We have stopped answering a question here. And next, Ms. Rigby.
Sorry, I had my hand raised, um, for the feasibility study, so that's why I lowered it. I, I just had.
Uh, this is feasibility study.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you. Um, so I appreciate your points, Mr. Washington. And I did want to say that I was very glad to see the, um, Oakland, Oakland Mills High School, um, renovation and addition looked at. Um, the one question I had outstanding when I looked at the feasibility study was, given our struggles at middle schools, I think previously, I've heard from, um, you or some other folks at school planning that maybe turning, um, Hammond Elementary School and Middle School into a full middle school could be an option for relieving capacity. But then the question comes, where do the elementary school students go? So, um, Mr. Rogers or Mr. Lubley or Mr. Washington, I guess the question is, is that still a, a potential, um, solution, or is that no longer being looked at?
Thank you for that question. It, it's, it is a strategy that we have discussed and we will continue to discuss. Um, one thing I'll point out as we're having this conversation about one funding. One thing I'll point out as we're having this conversation about one funding and then other facilities that need renovation. As Mr. Washington noted, Hammond Elementary School is a school that had a recent renovation. If we were to turn that completely into a middle school, as you noted, we'd have to put the elementary school students somewhere. So that not only becomes one facility that was relatively recently renovated, but now you're looking at two separate projects. So that gets us back into two projects that need funding. I'll note that funding costs or construction costs are going up. The state recently increased their building alone cost from three hundred and, three hundred and forty-six dollars a square foot to three hundred and fifty-three dollars a square foot. So costs continue to rise, but it is a strategy we've looked at. It's a out-of-the-box, different strategy we'd like to continue to discuss. There are circumstances to consider as we look at something like that.
So then would it, would that potential conversion need to then wait for additional capacity to be available in the region at the elementary school level?
It, that would definitely help. And what I mean by that is, obviously, the state, when they look at a project, they take a look at your demonstrated need. So if we were to increase capacity somewhere, that need would have to be demonstrated. It doesn't necessarily mean that the state would not participate in a strategy this way. That's a conversation that we can further with the state to see, instead of necessarily increasing capacity, it's a distribution of elementary school capacity. So it, there's different ways to look at that strategy.
Because land costs and construction costs will just continue to rise. I, I don't see land costs going down or construction costs going down anytime soon. So, um, really just, just trying to make sure we can, you know, think out of the, think outside the box. Um, and then I think that this is actually, Ms. Walsh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that the question you were asking about Thomas Viaduct was essentially, how did it end up over capacity in the first place? Because it's, to me, when I look at it, it's one of our newest schools with some of our newest developments. So where, where did we, where did we go wrong? And how do we learn from that and make sure that we are doing this with more precision in the future? And I saw Ms. Walsh.
Can I jump in? I, I think I can respond that. What I hear from our office OSP is that it's predicted to be overcrowded already. When, when we predicted like ten years ago, several years ago, is that right, Ms. Rogers?
But like, how and why did that happen, is what I don't understand.
Because of the deal, is that right?
Uh, so I guess there's a few factors. You're correct, Dr. Wu. We did, shortly after the school opened, we were predicting that it would be overcrowded at this level. And, and a variety of things can happen. I mean, over the course of, of new development being submitted and reviewed, timing and type of units can change. Uh, the, the yield rates as new units come online. Some yield rates that were once forecasted based on perhaps a county-wide average or an analysis of local, other local jurisdictions with similar types of units. You know, those predictions could prove to be inaccurate as we move forward and units start hitting the ground and students start showing up at school. So, you know, there's no crystal ball with this. We're, we're doing, we're using time-tested and proven methodologies to predict. Uh, and, you know, for, for Thomas Viaduct specifically, we could do a deeper dive and, and try to see what changed, you know, after the school opened to, to, to cause this to, to get to this point, but.
Mr. Rogers, can I interject for just a second with, um, Oxford?
Absolutely.
With Oxford Square, also as ERA increases the capacity, or the, the number of units from roughly eight hundred to like fifteen hundred, and then also allowed increase or allowed single-family attached by right, which townhouses do really create a lot more students a lot of times than apartments. And, and so that was one of the big things, I think, that really impacted the, um, the, although we got a school site, it, it really, the over-under is kind of negligible on that when you look at the increasing density and then also the type of housing. And that also happened at Laurel Park Station. We have a lot more townhouses than we had initially forecasted for. And so that might impact us down at Forest Ridge and, and Hammond Middle and the schools that that development feeds into. So those are the sorts of things that we need to, um, to look, take a look at when we're, and I, and the school system does, but you have to do it when these CRAs are approved, that happens quickly. And that's, you know, suddenly the, the density has increased, uh, you know, very quickly, whereas the school projections may not have caught up yet with that.
So Ms. Catrionio, then maybe, and Mr. Rogers, maybe the two of you can answer this between, no, it's actually, it's a really important timing question. So when the school was planned, designed, sited, and built, was that before the ZRA? Was there opportunities to change that after the ZRA? Or were those, or was the school already planned and built? And then the ZRA happened, which then doubles the surrounding community, and then the school's already behind the mark? I mean, because I really do want to do, get this sort of forensic look at Thomas Viaduct. It's not a crystal, I'm not looking for a crystal ball. I'm not even looking for perfection. I am simply looking for a better way.
So, so Ms. Rigby, how about this? Let's ask our staff, do some analysis, and then provide a report on this, just Thomas Vada. How about that? And I think we don't have time to talk about this here. I just wonder, we have a lot of people waiting in line.
Sure.
And how about that? So Ms. Rogers, can, do you think you can do that?
We absolutely can.
Okay. And, and I just want to get this in there. So when Mr. Rogers is looking, I mean, because if this is timing, types of units, like there are things that we can do to mitigate that issue. And so if that's the issue, then we, like, I think we need to know what the, what happened, so we can know what to fix, is all.
Yes.
Okay, we have Ms. Walsh, and so I, we have, let's say, for other people who spoke already, I will not, I will skip you. And for people who haven't spoke, I will just give to you and then we just, and we'll skip the long-term school deferred maintenance and the budget update. Unfortunately, we're stopped at eleven thirty. And Ms. Walsh?
Um, one of the things I wanted to say, while we have the county council here, is, Mr. Thomas Mall brought up the regional, the regional childhood programs and how they're counting. They're, the little guys are taking up space in the elementary schools, right? So we don't have as many elementary school rooms. We don't have, and they're not counting in the, in the capacity efforts. So one of the things that came up as our, as our board meeting was, A, utilizing the land banks that we currently have. B, utilizing office space, like existing office space, especially if, as people go virtual, full virtual programs. And then they have their kids at home with them, right, while they're doing their meetings? And then also using the village centers. So as we're thinking about, like, coming up with innovative solutions to kind of solve our problems, I think it would also be helpful i- in terms of like the county's, like, planning for vil- village centers and like the existing land banks. So for us, it's kind of start thinking a little bit more outside the box, as Ms. Rigby is saying, like, so that maybe we don't have to build a whole new elementary school. We can place some programs inside of office space that exists. And the idea of a regional programming, meaning that it may not necessarily be your local school, may not be as close as your elementary school is, but it's still within your general vicinity. So I kind of want us to start, like, thinking about, like, different ideas as opposed to, like, we just built schools? We just put kids in schools, right? So like, like, what could, what else could we do beyond that current model that we have?
Okay, Ms. Walsh?
Thank you, Dr. Wu. Council administration has, has reminded me that one of the subtopics we wanted to include on today's agenda was this joint special work meeting on schools nearing capacity that's required per code. So Section sixteen-one-one-oh-three D says that when we get notice, which I think this feasibility study is, that a certain school is going to reach ninety-five percent capacity and is projected to exceed a hundred and ten within five years, that we are jointly, not only the council and the Board of Education, but the executive is supposed to collaborate on proposed solutions to that. And that meeting, we have to provide three weeks' notice in advance. So, Dr. Wu, we can coordinate with you and, and the executive's office and figure out when best to have that meeting. But maybe that's when we can have some of the follow-up from Mr. Rogers and Mr. Lubley, and then, and maybe hunker down on some case studies.
Sure, sure.
That's all I have to add. Thank you.